I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Please stand and then should be the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
Wonderful house. Thanks everyone for calling. So first is the acceptance of a donation from the Recreation Director?
Yes, so in the board's packet, we have the request from the Recreation Director and the Recreation Commission to accept the generous donation of one kayak paddle from Michael Gambell. So have that before the board for acceptance.
Any questions or comments?
Like Campbell or Gambell?
Gambell.
Yeah.
Get a correction.
Alright, thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
I move that the board vote soon to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, to accept the donation of one kayak and one kayak paddle to the town of Upton Recreation.
Second motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? A second donation from Director of Elder and Social Services.
And so in the board's packet is a donation of $500 from ERA Key Charitable Trust for the Upton Food Pantry.
Any questions or comments?
No, wonderful generous gift.
Do I hear a motion?
I move that the board vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Subsection 53A, to accept donations to the town of Upton for the food pantry from the ERA Key Charitable Trust in the amount of $500.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm going to abstain because I work for ERA and I'm Chair of the Charitable Trust. Thank you. Execution of Intermunicipal Agreement for Blackstone Valley Partnership for Public Health Members Board of Health.
Okay, so this item is before the board for consideration. The Board of Health has been working with the towns of Blackstone, Douglas, Hope Dale, Mendon, Millville, Northbridge, and Oxbridge as part of a regional partnership for public health. This is a program that is administered through a grant by CMR PC, and we're looking at re-upping it. It basically, for the term, it lasts as long as the grant funding is in place. This has been an extremely beneficial partnership for Upton to be part of leveraging not only other expertise of specialists that Upton by itself would not be able to retain, but it's something that also provide a regional approach to public health to improve not only Upton's presence, but other residents within the lower Blackstone Valley communities. So in the board's packet was a cover letter from Central Mass Regional Planning, talking about the program. And then the first part of the IMA intermunicipal agreement that lays out responsibilities and all the provisions. There's additional attachments that this packet would have been, about 200 pages if all documents were there. But Board of Health voted to recommend or support this. And it's before the board for approval as well.
Any questions or comments?
None.
Maureen, do I hear a motion?
I move that the board vote to execute the intermunicipal agreement for Blackstone Valley Partnership for Public Health as presented.
That's awesome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
So and Laura, before you leave, I do have a signature page for the very side.
Okay, I'll do that. I'll make my something right now. Annual new appointments. First up would be some applications for council on aging. I know we've heard from Sandra Marusi and Robert Ponley. Yes, Katie Brooks, would you like to tell us why you'd like to be on council on aging?
So I think I have a big idea, which you need insights. The I use very senior centers integrated into the general community center. It's really important for seniors, especially this day when it's such an academic learning system. To be able to be around younger people. A program we have today for a big school. You have a basic intervention in terms of the health for the students from the high school. And I'm grateful to be in university and I'd like to see more of that happen. I think it's great to do this, that. Seniors are living much longer. And we have a role to play in the community. Getting to see and be respected. And I think it would be very helpful if we were able to spend some time with young people, so even that's reading books. Reading life stories, talking about what our childhood was like. Growing up, with perhaps a show and tell. It's really about, and I just, I feel very strongly about making sure the seniors are not forgotten. On our community, because we are quite a large community. We're lots of one.
I agree. Thank you, I appreciate that. Cheryl Henderson, would you like to make any comments?
Students, I feel less in passion. I want to be sure that we have preparation procedures. I volunteer down there. I have the joy that comes with daily when I'm there. Totally love and working with a lot of the senior candidates. I know I have a passion to help others. I have in the past worked with various people that have helped me mount title for medical here or SNAP programs, which is the supplement education programs. Looking at, Andrew is working now volunteering in there. I volunteered last year and was able to call a lot of people in the town of community program, all the continuing program, which really made me feel rich to do that. I also enjoy returning Ice Cream Social. My kids have been on the capital ones. Being able to see years that we're doing with our foster recovery updating ILS Association, which is a part of. I want to help form a rally staff who allow the aging community in Upton to grow, to be happy and be blessed.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And Maggie Omen?
Would commend those two.
No, nothing like a little pressure. Just explain why you think you'd be great, you know?
I have worked with the elderly in the community for a while in my home. I also have a real passion to be committed to helping elderly in this town with the needs, specific needs they got. And there's a long thing out there that I don't think we're reaching yet. That need there. And somehow, some way, we have to grow in that and deal with that and encourage them to come in more with us. The programs that we have are phenomenal. The Vian is, well, is a seasoned veteran of using it every week. It's one of the most needed days that we have. I've seen a change in our people and I see more people utilizing services. And I enjoy to step in with Tanya, different ideas, how to do different things to incorporate both the young and the old in the community. And I know somebody used the word respect. I don't think the seniors are getting the respect that they should be getting as vital teachers. They can aid, can assist the problems that they have, all the different theories that they work in. And that's why I'm.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. And the last candidate would be John Solomon?
Yes, hi. I'm very interested in helping out the new director Tanya as well as the personnel there at the senior center. I've been working, I had worked there eight years prior to drive her. I got to know a lot of the seniors and found out that they have many needs that weren't made. And a lot of needs that they rely on from council on aging. I look forward to having the opportunity to work still with the new director and also any of the volunteers that come on the work. People will help. It seems to be a problem with volunteers on in this town, but I think that that's something that we can work out and maybe. I might get an opportunity to have a chance to give it a go.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I have to say, this is the first time in a long time we have six applications for three spots. And it's wonderful to see because you're right. We have had kind of a drought of volunteers.
And as I mentioned, I sat in on the last year and a half the meetings of council on aging. And again, unfortunately, they, it's sad, but they haven't had a forum six of those months. These people come in to try to help out. And because there was no membership, there wasn't a complete membership law. I'd like to see that change.
Yeah, we have, we have reorganized some of that. And you know, where you're supposed to only serve six years on board and step off, and we are implementing that. It's coming back, it's a vibrant council on aging right now. That's what we hope to bring it in, especially, you know, get people involved in it. So we appreciate it. So, so now we get the lovely opportunity to choose. And that, it's very difficult. Comments? Maureen?
I want to thank everyone for applying, wanting to be part of the community, especially the senior community.
Yeah, I mean, I would second that and offer, you know, obviously, being a member of the council on aging formally or informally, formally is one thing, but it doesn't mean that for those folks that don't end up serving, you can't still volunteer and help and play an active, critical role and go to all the meetings and participate in the discussions and share your perspectives and do work to support the seniors in the community and all the programming. I know that there's a lot of openness. It's a great group of people all around. So I'm excited that the enthusiasm and to see all the energy and interest, it's really a testament to how much the community values seniors. It's wonderful. So thank you all.
Yeah, go ahead Maggie.
I just wanted to say that if you don't get into one of the three, it is a great staff of friends of the council. And yes, and that was the area did. We really need people.
Yeah.
Exactly. I would really urge everyone to attend all the meetings because things happen. I mean, we have people that move. We have people that step off of committees. And if you've been there, there's no getting up to speed. So really, whoever we choose tonight, it is going to be a difficult decision, but I would urge everyone else to stay involved. And Maggie's right, we need to re-implement the friends and get those up and running. And as you said, get as many people as we can involve. So, who wants to start? Brett, do you have three you prefer?
I do.
Okay.
And just to, just before, we have, just a reminder, we have two three-year terms and one one-year term.
Yes. That goes into the reorganization and people stepping on and off. Go ahead. Yes. Yeah, we've cut it from 11 to nine.
On your city to bylaw, that probably, you have a change up.
See, change the bylaws at the, I think it was two or three months ago, the COA meeting.
I assume you changed bylaw law all the time. So how would we accept the bylaws? If bylaw change has a bad impact.
The bylaw change goes through the council on aging and then it is presented to the sweatman. Before we view, then to discuss and to sign them.
So the, looking back and working with Tanya, the Director, and this also predates Tanya with the interim Director, Barbara Ponley, where we were trying to identify procedurally how the bylaws were developed. Bylaws were not bylaws as say the general bylaw. They were policies and procedures that were adopted and could be amended at any regular scheduled meeting of the council on aging. And that's where there was a working group that evaluated the last set that were amended in the early 2000 timeframe. And basically updated to reflect sort of updated realities of the department as well as town governmental structure.
So do we each want to sort of nominate one? Like I can nominate Robert Fleming to one of the seats and then nominate someone if you have someone and then you can nominate someone and that sort of gives us the opportunity to get our first choices out there?
And nominate Cheryl Henderson? Oh, you're bothering me now, sorry.
Oh, I guess this is just a discussion. So these aren't questions, they're nominations. I'm just proposing that we each.
Okay, I choose on Maggie Omen?
Fair enough. So with that, I would nominate Bob Fleming and Cheryl Henderson and Maggie Omen to serve on the council on aging seats.
Which of the ones on one-year term?
Oh, is there? We've got it.
We have two threes and one one.
Two threes and one one, fighting. Do you have any preference? Where do you have?
Oh, well, that solves that problem.
Okay, so there we go. So Robert Fleming for a three-year term, Cheryl Henderson for a three-year term, and Maggie Omen for a one-year term. Thank you, Maggie.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all, we appreciate everything. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
He's driving.
And I need to find myself in my package. The appointments, are we doing the laser of the team? Where am I?
The only other, we had gone through at the last meeting. All the other, right, we had one that we're looking for confirmation for the Finance Committee.
Okay.
And I did receive an email from Paul Flaherty indicating that he would like to be reappointed. So that's, that's the other one that we have.
Okay.
And on what's the chapter?
Okay.
That ends up in comments of being three-year terms.
Mr. Flaherty, would you like to speak to that? He's there early.
No, I have no comment. If you want to do it, fine. If you don't, it's okay too.
Yeah, I gotta tell you, Paul, it's nice to know you absolutely never change. Okay, do I hear, I will make. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I have a motion to appoint Paul Flaherty to the Finance Committee for another three years.
Three more years. I second the motion, Mr. Flaherty.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're stuck with our.
Miss Flaherty, you're unanimous, you get to do it all over again.
And I will, I will say that this will be the last three-year term.
You just missed it, say Mr. Fleming like this.
Thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
Have a good night, Paul. Okay, so we're done with our appointments?
That's all of them, right?
Yes.
Yes.
We do, we do have some where we do have vacant positions where now that all the renewals and these are done, we'll formulate another list. We do have some vacancies for which we never received any applications. So we'll put that out so that over the course of the year, if people want to serve and they're interested and we can go getting that.
Beautiful. And I would urge people to view the list. Okay, Joe, may we have you town manager report?
Sure.
Okay, so here we are, end of the fiscal year. So a lot of the efforts within our office ends up being associated with closing out the year, closing out grant projects, finalizing reporting. For example, we recently completed the HUC control system upgrade for the fire station. This was funded through an earmark that Representative Radian was successful in getting for us. We are, as with all building projects, we have a low cobwebs to work out of the software systems. Dennis is working with the contractor to make sure that all those issues are resolved. The benefit is that if there are issues, the system is on the same software platform as the gaming center. So Dennis can remotely log in, see what's going on and can direct people to address the situation. So that's one of the objectives that we had in this project was to reduce the sort of silos of building maintenance software programs and start to consolidate so we can mention things more effectively. Also, spend a lot of time with Chief Bradley in preparing for his eventual retirement. We are interviewing these chief candidates later on, interim chief candidates later on this week. And we finalized the invitation for bids for these consultant search and duty assessment. And that's been sent out and that will be due August 2nd. So that if we do have contract and we want to bring things before the board on the board's August 6 meeting, we'll have time to analysis and bring company on board. Also, with the retirement of the Building Commissioner, brought on board the town of Westboro to provide consulting, sorry, alternate building commissioner services for the next three weeks and later on in the agenda is candidate to request the board's approval for serving as interim building commissioner. Also, working on finalizing some financial related items, namely with Grange project as well as now that we have guidance from the state on the Mass Works water sewer infrastructure we're finalizing next steps that we can get ready to go out to bid for that. See, that ends up being it. It's sort of this period of time, we have a lot of staff that are using their vacation days because you're limited in being able to take things over into the new fiscal year and giving people a much needed break coming after a very busy FY '25 and very busy town meeting season so that everyone can rejuvenate and get ready for what is right around the corner, special town meeting in November.
Coming up works. Okay, thank you, Joe, I appreciate that. Is there any public input? Lynn?
Hi, I'm Maggie. This is the Chair.
Sure.
On your gender is the Town Manager Act Committee Recommendation. And under their recommendation, they name an ADA director. It's technically an ADA coordinator. And in years past, we've had an ADA grievance policy and the grievance officer was the council on aging director. But we really didn't have an ADA coordinator. So I have a suggestion. In the town of Grafton, the ADA coordinator is actually the building commissioner. And the grievance coordinator falls underneath the town manager. It's two, it's kind of two separate things in a way. Jerry, can you help me out? The A, if I fumble here, the ADA coordinator is somebody that looks at, like what I'm always talking about with the building codes and 521 CMR. Is this, is this grant built right? Is this park and lot strike right? Are we, are we making accommodations that way? So it's where Mass Building Code and ADA now. And so I would really suggest that the board consider taking the ADA coordinator and putting that in the hands of land use or a building commissioner and taking, and having the ADA grievance person, that's if you need an accommodation, and leaving that with the town manager. So it's just a recommendation and thought that you should consider that it might work out better for everyone.
Interesting, I had that highlighted. So you, instead of Disabilities Act Director, you would say coordinator?
It's not, you, when you're.
I'm just looking for the language, so.
The language is this, there, I can't find anything under an ADA director. If I wanted to be an ADA coordinator, I would take the classes from Mass Office of Disabilities, which are better. And, and you would be a coordinator. Every ADA coordinator is a listing of a job title. I don't see an ADA director anywhere listed. So coordinator would be the correct word. I believe that Joe can verify that for me. And then, like I said, the grievance sense of it. And under our Disabilities Commission, when it wasn't functioning, all that language is there for the grievance, an ADA grievance for you. So.
And our Disabilities Commission is something that's severely lacking in membership in my work.
Correct. And then with the changes with executive director, with the director over at ESS, that's something that I wanted Tanya to get. Having previous to the working graph and I'm familiar with the exact role of the building commissioner played and especially if we are revisiting the building commissioner job description, mark filling in, I think that's a very worthwhile thing to consider because for a lot of the things that were spelled out within the ESS director's job description, realistically, it should be more on the building side. So I totally agree.
It makes sense to sort of more closely align those two functions.
Because that's, especially if you're going to work with the actual code and everything, and code.
Yeah.
Especially code.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks Lynn, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any public comment?
What?
Yeah, go ahead Maggie.
The trustees have to be put on a town manager after you pay the recommendation. Would you like that now or would you like us to wait until we get to that ten minutes?
I think we'll wait, but I appreciate it. Anybody else? Not seeing any, we will move to the next item, which is the presentation of classification and compensation plan, GOV HR.
So, GOV HR is coming on, let's see. Just trying to see if there's.
Forty-five, yeah.
We told them to log on around 6:30. What I'd recommend, maybe we, we just bumped to electric aggregation because the folks from Colonial Power are here. And this should be really a five-minute discussion.
Sounds like a plan. Colonial Power, if you'd like to present. Yeah, if you can present there, you're better picked up on the microphone. So, and we appreciate it. Thank you for coming.
Our capital on the Colonial Power, I'd more like to have. So, and I believe it is in your packet, there's some, there's some pricing. And all we're looking for is some direction about the optional products and the authority for the managers. So at this time, if you're looking at the, all of ours is going to look just like this. It real, real simple here, unfortunately, because of the department and their inflexibility at that time, the top tranche is going to be the default product. That's going to be the one that meets basic service. And it's going to, it's our lowest, most economical option. Now comes decision times and choices. There are three other, should be four other products here that we need to just make some decisions on and how, where the town wants to go from our renewable standpoint. So the, the next product down is, it's a national wind product. So again, on that left-hand side, pretty basic. The fourth supplier is a low supplier on each and every option that we have, which is one less thing that we need to have a discussion of. But this is something, the first, the first option is a national wind, meaning probably wind wrecks out of Pennsylvania or Oklahoma, but it's not local to ISO New England. And that's got 30, 38% more. Wind wrecks added that to the 62%, that's renewable, gives you 100% renewable product. Again, I just want to look quickly, I. Again, I just want to look quickly. I, I believe that's the, and it is, it's the next economical from a price perspective product. Then we move down and the, the next three are all local mass class ones, meaning that the wrecks are developed here in I S O New England after nineteen ninety seven. And they just step up in from twenty five percent to fifty percent, then it's a hundred percent. And then the pricing does exactly that, meaning stepping up each, each way. So depending on what you're thinking, whether you only want local or you're not, you're indifferent, whether it's local or national, it's still a renewable energy and it's still one hundred percent renewable with the national, but it's not local. But one of the other, one of the other options will be a local option. And really, that's the only, the first one's going to already be made for you. And then it's just which two of the other, of the other four that you're looking for.
So just to sort of bring us back to the last meeting. The Department of Public Utilities approved our aggregation plan and allowed us to go to the next step, which was put out to bid for electric suppliers. These rates came through that effort and the supplier for consistently had those lowest rates. For the last presentation, it was mentioned that what the town then does is have the principal rate and then it gives two options in case people maybe wanted to be more renewable energy focused. So they would elect to pay more because there would be, say, they, they they ethically wanted to be all renewable. So that's where we know that ninety percent is going to choose that base, that base charge. But people may say, well, hey, I'll pay a little bit more if fifty percent is coming from renewable energy sources in Massachusetts versus one that pays one hundred percent. So that's, that's sort of the, the decision point. And then if you can just sort of compare against the projected rates for national grid.
And one thing I left out is, so on the left, on the right hand side there, it gives you the starting in August, the rate was sixteen for national grid will be sixteen zero five five. So believe it or not, other than a hundred percent renewable, all your options here are under that. And then this is just, it's, this is not a stone by any means, but starting in February, we think the rate's going to be around fourteen six. That's so national grid is going to go from sixteen to fourteen. And again, it looks like a pretty good scenario for, for the choices, some maybe slightly over, but it would have more renewable in it. So that, and I just want you to know, the sixteen zero five five, that's in stone, that's been approved. The, the fourteen six is nothing more than an estimate with their, with their buy that just happened in today's market.
Oh, the other thing should explain in this table is it's based on a twelve month say contract, twenty four or thirty six. Of course, the thirty six is lower for each of those and the twelve month sort of contract period is higher. If you could just comment on, on that sort of term.
Very basic, just stating that right now the curve is vacuated, meaning that as you get further out in the curve, pricing has, has started to settle down a little bit. Which is one of the reasons we were thinking twenty four might be a sweet spot because you might see some more of that settling. I, I just want to say, we could see it go in the exact opposite direction given geopolitical issues. The least Russia, Ukraine, so forth. If you thought this pricing isn't bad from a historic standpoint, it's not terrible, but it's not near historical lows. You know, you're probably looking at, I just want to see, you know, your pricing is actually excellent compared to other communities that are on the marketplace right now. And that has to do with where you're located in the senior load zone because of the passing. So you're, you're getting a little bit more value than you would have otherwise. But for me, I think anything, the twenty four, the thirty six, depending on your view of the marketplace, I, and I mean this honestly. I, I couldn't, there isn't a lot of difference. Just to give everyone an idea, the difference between the thirteen eight and the seventeen nine six is four ten thousandths of a penny. So we're talking about less than six cents a month between the, on the default product, between the twenty four and the thirty six month. So the same price for all of us as far as pricing is on six hundred kilowatts. So again, we're just looking for some direction on which two of the optional products you'd like.
Questions?
Yep. So a couple of things. I mean, obviously the first one is a check, right? Like that's sort of mandatory. So the, of the other four, I think that we, I, I would certainly advocate for giving citizens the option, at least one option of a hundred percent renewable. The question, the thing I'm less sure about is the difference between the Massachusetts renewable versus the out of state renewable. Like what does that mean or what's the difference? I mean, obviously I have a bias towards supporting our own state, but I don't even know what that means. Are these businesses, is this like, like what?
So a wreck is nothing more than someone that's producing a megawatt of renewable energy. Just so happens that the national wind is produced outside of I S O New England. Most of those wrecks come from like Oklahoma, Texas, some on the mountains on in Pennsylvania, where a lot of wrecks come from. From a wreck, a wreck is a wreck. I just want you to know, it's just, it's a lot of people think of Massachusetts, it helps out with jobs. It's a local economy and so forth. And they think that it's as far as helping out, if you're going to go green, you should be in mass. But as far as carbon reduction, a windmill spinning in Oklahoma has no more impact than a windmill spinning in Upton.
The local economic or the state economic impacts of having these wrecks generated here versus in another state.
And there, I just want you to know, as you can tell, they're far more expensive.
And that's the thing. So just so people sort of get the notion here, right? Like if we were to give customers a choice of a hundred percent and it was sourced nationally, the rate, we'll call it the twenty four month is thirteen point nine cents. The rate of a state ref would be sixteen point nine cents. So significant difference between those two prices.
Yes. And I just want to speak, what, what we're doing, so now I'm going to get into it. So what, what we have here is a hundred percent renewable product, right? So under basic service, you have mass class ones and other renewables. That equals sixty two percent that's required to be renewable. But out of that sixty two percent, twenty four percent is mass class one wrecks. Then there are class two wrecks, the A P S, so forth and so on. This is a hundred percent renewable product. This bottom that you just mentioned is one hundred percent mass class ones. So you would be the gold standard as far you are local, a hundred percent renewable. Not only that, you're getting a hundred percent mass class one. So you'd be actually over, you're going to get seventy six percent mass class ones plus the twenty four. And on top of that, you would have extra renewables in, in the energy that you will purchase. So it is above and beyond. This is the gold standard as far as renewables go. Just, there's a difference between the two and I just I, if people have questions.
More than just the economics of it. There's also a difference in the class of the S of the wreck.
That's, there are more mass class ones in this product than there are in the, in the hundred percent renewable product with the at, at the thirty eight percent, there are more mass classes.
What's the difference between a mass class one wreck, renewable wreck and a national renewable?
So that's what I was just going through. It is really no difference other than one's local and one's national. It's a windmill that's, that's blowing in Texas and there's lots of area and lots of.
What's the difference between a class one wreck and a? What is it? What are they?
So it is a, a mass class one wreck is a renewable energy certificate. That was a, a project built up to nineteen ninety seven in I S O New England qualified in Massachusetts, right? And a, a national wind wreck could have been built prior to that, could have been built after that, but it is not something in I S O New England. So it's not local in, in any way. Those are the only differences.
Yep. Okay.
Or any other questions? No, I think we should give the citizen an option to go nationally or with wrecks. Kind of savings.
So the, the savings out of the gate here, so where everyone's ninety percent of people will stay in the default product that you're going to put them in. And you're looking at about two cents, two cents on the average, a little bit more is about six dollars and sort of be twelve for each penny. It's about six dollars. It'll be a little bit over twelve dollars a month for everyone that's in the program until February. And then that, that sixteen cents is going to change. When you start the program, it'd be about twelve dollars, maybe, maybe thirteen, fourteen dollars per month, per customer. It'd be savings.
So if I'm understanding correctly, the first option is mandatory. And then we take.
Yes.
And then we take two additional ones.
That's correct.
Personally, I think, and each, each member of the town of Upton decides where they want to be. They can stay with the mandatory one, they could go national one hundred percent renewal, or they could go, if that's what we chose for, they could go one hundred percent nets. Is that correct? It would be an individual choice?
Yes, but I just want to make sure that I'm specific because it's an opt out aggregation. So everyone that's on basic service would be automatically enrolled in this top, in the basic one. They'd have a choice whether to stay in that, go to one of the other two options that the town has, or go back to basic service. If they don't make any choice, they're going to be put in this, you know, in the top, in the meats product. But I do want to say, if for any reason, two months from now they want to get out, they can get out. Three months later, they can get back in. So, but if they do nothing, they will end up in the same basic service at a lower rate.
Within that program before, and it was a mandatory opt out. You did nothing, you automatically wanted to. Yes.
That's exactly true. I just.
And it was easy because I opted out at one point. I did a phone call and was like, what? How did I end up here?
Like the more we're sort of talking through it, I think, and looking at the pricing and the considerations, right? Like obviously this is all about people saving money. So no matter what, we're going to be saving people money, which is fantastic. So we can all be very enthusiastic about that. We could offer both of the hundred percent renewable options and let people choose like if you, if you, because it's, it's like you either want the cheapest rate, which is sort of the basic, that's you're going to, the ninety percent, you're going to stick with it. Some people might be incented to say, you know what? I want to be fully renewable, but I really am price conscious. So I'll go with the national one because that's my priority. And then if people want the gold standard, you offer them the gold standard. Like I, I think that could be a great way to go about it. It maximizes our sort of savings, our, gives people the best choice and people that are money and environment conscious can have a choice. People that are want the gold standard have a choice and people that want to save money and keep it basic have that choice.
That was my thought. Yes, you know, if we're going to go renewable, go a hundred percent, we the national or local.
I like it.
So we're, we have the basic, then we have the option number two, which is the, the national. And then we're going to go with the, I'll call it the gold standard, the hundred percent renewable.
Yes.
Any concerns?
Not just looking for, for guidance. So.
And then the suppliers like one, two, three, four, that like that's already been decided. Is that sort of, that's not what we're here to talk about?
This was predictive. Choosing a low supplier and I don't know if you want to give him guidance, whether it's twenty four, thirty six, or you just want to wait and go pricing. Final pricing is due tomorrow at eleven and management would need to make a decision before three. He does not have to make a decision tomorrow. Sure. You don't like what you see? No, it's an answer. That's not a problem. But there will be executable pricing tomorrow.
I don't feel strong about twenty versus thirty six.
You know, I mean, it's, it's like playing market. Do you do the short run though? And, and let me tell you, if any of us knew, none of us would be tired. I'd be on the beach somewhere. Sorry.
Hundred percent. Yeah, I'm with you. I, I would be as, as well. You know, and this difference is, is.
It's negligible.
Correct.
So for, for argument's sake, say we chose twenty four four months and we chose the two one hundred percent renewable. Come February first, it basically, or it's probably on an annual basis, February, then again in August, where if someone really wanted to, to follow this, they should be looking at when national grid comes out. And they may opt out in February, but then maybe pick back up in August. I mean, sounds like just a little monitoring that people should also do.
I'll just agree with you. So it would, it would actually be you'd opt out in January and then opt back in possibly in June, if that was what you were looking to do. Or vice versa. But that's exactly the timeframe that you're going to be wanting to be taking a look at the website. Because it will be, oh, our website will be updated so they can do what Atlas has.
I think one of the things that on town side, when we pull all this together, there's, there's going to be, I, I've seen it with other towns. A lot of questions, F A Qs that get put out so people can explain because one, anything that then is mandatory becomes a question mark. But the only reason why you can get the rates they are is because it is mandatory, because they need predictability. Because if you had it opt in, you just may not get people to sign up.
Right.
So, you know, having questions about, well, you know, how frequently can I opt in and opt out? What should I be looking for? I've seen some towns that have that type of information as part of PR campaign.
We will have all of that as well as hopefully we'll have a information session somewhere. I don't know. I'm going to cast on an A D or here. Just an information session so that people wanted to come in and ask questions. Yep. After, after it's been decided and right when the program's going to start, we have a whole marketing campaign that will push so that people will be. Absolutely.
Something or the responses on one, maybe to the other. I don't know, but it would be, but just in case, nice and plan B.
You have one more question.
Really? Beautiful. Go ahead.
Last one. What percent of towns have these aggregation agreements in Massachusetts of the three hundred fifty?
Out of the three hundred fifty, forty nine of them are M U E, so they're not. So there's two hundred or two thirds out of the three hundred communities left are now, now have approved aggregations.
Did I?
I don't.
Did I?
No.
Did I just say discussion dependent?
I saw it. It said discussion dependent. When you have fifty pages on your computer, people, it gets a little.
Oh, yeah. No, you do. It says I need the board vote to select the following three. Okay, I got it.
Okay.
I got it.
Do I hear a motion?
I move that the board vote to approve to select the following three electric products. The standard retail electric supply, the retail supply through the purchase of national wind wrecks and the retail supply for purchase of one hundred percent mass class one.
I'll say. All in favor?
Aye.
And for the period of time, twenty four months.
Twenty four months.
Twenty four months.
Okay. So, so if you have solar, you're, you would also, unless you have a third party supplier, you'd still be able to only when you were using actual energy, which would be, if you were generating more than you were using, then you would be at that during that. Yeah, exactly. At this time, during the which you might actually be.
What if you're basing that supply to satisfy a hundred percent Massachusetts renewable? Does that, who was towns to create these solar ones to, is it government? What happens?
So, so believe it or not, in this scenario, and things are starting to move that way. What actually happens is you pay something called A C P. So on your renewable piece, they'll have to buy the rest of suppliers happy. But to meet their renewable portfolio standard, and I know this is, I apologize, but to read that, people just got, they pay what you call A C P or the alternative finance payment. So rather than the buy the rack at thirty eight dollars, they write a check. A C P is forty, they write a check for forty, they get paid. In asking finance for. It's very difficult to put that one there, the A C P, so you have to meet the renewable portfolio standard, meaning that's the. It's very difficult to put that one there, the A C P, so you have to meet the renewable portfolio standard, meaning that's the R P S. And to do so, you have to buy racks, and there's there's twenty-four percent mass class one.
Does that affect the consumers?
It does not.
So it doesn't affect the pricing for the consumers?
Oh.
It might not, but we'll take our force and our, that's stupid, I'm sure.
This wouldn't have anything to do with solar, it's much more expensive to build solar, these are all wind racks.
Okay, so well, that's the thing.
No, but it could build more windmills out in the ocean. Yeah, sure.
There's more demand for renewable energy, there's.
Yeah, correct, that that's.
Valuable, the economics around creating the supply to support the demand for renewable energy. I mean, that's the whole point of all of this, it's.
That's the statement.
People don't want to support renewable energy because they don't support wind or don't want windmills, then they shouldn't choose those options, they should choose the basic options.
Does the government get involved in what's on the bottom speed?
And the government doesn't, the economics does.
Yes.
That help?
They're very regulated, so.
Yeah, fair.
Well, thank you for coming, and I'll get my key done, I know it's been a while.
Sure has.
Thank you.
Can we touch some more?
American.
So now I'll move to the presentation and classification and compensation with Tom Hager.
Hello?
Hello?
Okay, hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you? Would you like me to start, or do you want to? Joseph, do you want to make a introduction, or would you like me to just move forward?
I'll just very briefly introduce Joellen, she is with Gov HR. They're the consultants that the town has selected and retained to update the classification and compensation study. Uh, Joellen has presented to the Personnel Committee, as well as at a recent Department Heads meeting, um, about the classification plan, what went into it, classification plan. Um, and it is before the board, after taking comments and sort of finalizing that draft, a copy of, it's a very lengthy document, so a link was included in your packet. So Joellen has a PowerPoint where she can basically identify the methodology and the end product, and then we can talk about next steps.
Great.
Glory George, Joellen, thank you.
Thank you, well, good to see you all tonight, let me share my screen. I do have a presentation for you, it's pretty general, but happy to go through a high-level presentation of the report that you have in front of you. And initially, I I want to thank the staff. I think a lot of times when we do these types of studies, it's it's very emotional for people. Uh, it talks about their compensation, it talks about their positions, and working with with Joe and Sandy has been terrific, as well as all of the employees that were covered by the study. So in order for us to get information, to turn around to report for you, uh, they have been terrific, you know? And so I just wanted to let you know that upfront, because it it is a partnership when we do this type of study. So there's several things that I'll go through tonight, again, high level, you have the report, what were we asked to do for you, the work that needed to be performed, the job evaluation process that we went through, the proposed classification plan that we've developed, the compensation survey that we conducted on behalf of the town, the proposed compensation plan, how you could potentially implement it, going forward, both on the classification and compensation sides, and then how you would manage the system going forward. And of course, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. So initially, we worked with the town to do the job evaluation process, as well as develop the classification plan. So we had initial meetings, we talked about the work that was to be performed. We had some meetings with the the town, with the employees. Uh, we distributed some information to make sure that everybody knew exactly what the study was, what it wasn't. Uh, so we did all of that upfront. At the same time, we determined a list of comparable communities to opt-in, to really get some information with regard to compensation levels, and, you know, where you might want to think about setting your compensation ranges for all of the positions that were covered by the study. We then went through the job evaluation process, and we developed the whole classification plan. Um, so that that was the first part of the study, working with the employees, getting information from the market about the the compensation, and developing the classification plan. Once we received the information from the market, we we did a compensation analysis to see, you know, where were you in relation to the market, at what percentile, and what would make sense for Upton going forward. And so what you have now in front of you is a report, we consider it our draft final report. Uh, we have, it's basically finished, but, you know, we want to present it to you to make sure that you're comfortable with what's included. If you have any questions, we can address the questions, if we need to make any final modifications, we can do that as well. So the first part of the study, and again, this is where it involved the town employees that were covered by the study, is the job evaluation process. So we looked at seventy-three classifications or positions in the city, I mean, in the town. Um, and we looked at all of these different factors, so every position had an answer to these nine different job factors, ranging from education and experience needed to perform the work, all the way down to what are the, what is the work environment? Do they supervise, um, and the technology needed to perform the work? And today, you know, when we talk about technology, it's not only computers, it's the aptitude that's needed to perform the work, whether it's operating equipment, or, you know, any devices that they have to have. So it's broader than just computers. So we look at these nine factors in relation to every position in the town, as far as our job evaluation process. The other thing that we do is we talk with the employees, so we don't want to have employees fill out a questionnaire, and we get it back, and we make a determination. Every community is a little bit different, so talking with the employees in Upton, learning about the work that they do allows us to create a classification plan that's unique to the town. You know, you will hear, I'm sure you have heard, uh, over and over from your employees, and the Personnel Board has certainly heard this. You know, if I went to work in, you know, Northborough, or I went to work in Southborough, or Westborough, or, um, you know, another community in the area, my job would be a little bit different. So we look at the job very holistically to make sure that how we're classifying it in Upton makes sense for Upton. Um, so other communities may or may not have the exact same job duties, but we look, you know, we look at the classification, and we and we make sure that it's in your plan as it relates to the work that they're doing. And the reason why that's important is it establishes what we call internal equity. So we are looking at all of the jobs in Upton as they relate to the other jobs in Upton. You know, and again, we're 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 adjusting for the complexity of the work in your community. So we developed a classification plan, it's in the report. If you have the report in front of you, if you look on page twenty-two of the printed report, or twenty-four of the PDF, you'll see the classification plan. Um, it has thirteen grades, and grade one is the more entry-level positions, that goes all the way through to grade thirteen, which is the town manager position. The second thing that we did was the compensation survey, and and this is important because we want to look at the market in relation to what you're paying your employees in Upton. So in Massachusetts, we've done many, many surveys, and the good thing is that the Department of Revenue has a lot of information. So we source our information from the Department of Revenue, and we look at these criteria. So there's a appendix and other report that shows you how we determine comparable communities. We look at two things that are non-financial, population and proximity. So you can see on this list, the first item and the last item are non-financial, but everything in the middle is financial. And that's all comes from the D O R. So we look at the, you know, capital income, all the way down to state aid. And if you look at the appendix, you'll see there's different weights depending on what we're looking at. So, for example, state aid is a little bit more questionable in Massachusetts than maybe some of the other factors, so that may not have as much of a weight. So we went through that analysis, and we came up with the communities that we thought were comparable to Upton. And we came up with twenty communities. So twenty is a lot, usually we want to use twelve to sixteen. However, you can see on this list, there's a few with asterisks, and many, the ones with the asterisks, uh, without the asterisks scored ninety-three points or higher, which means they're very comparable to Upton. Uh, but then you'll see there's a few others, there's Grafton, Hopkinton, Northborough, Northbridge, uh, Southborough, Uxbridge, and Westborough that that have asterisks. And the reason why they're there is because when we talked with the town, and we talked with um, the staff about, you know, where do you get talent, who are you competing with? Those are some communities that came up, you know, and if you think about your region in Worcester County, it makes sense to compare to those communities. So while those communities were not at the ninety-three points or higher, there's still a level of comparability, which we have included in appendix speech. So you can look down and see, you know, some are pretty comparable, and some are less comparable, but there's always a measure of comparability. And if you are trying to procure talent from those communities, then they do become relevant. The other thing that's important, when you think about doing this analysis, is we developed a list of twenty communities, and that's a lot. And the the good thing about your work and the work with, you know, working with your administration, is we we received a lot of data. You know, so the appendix and the report that includes all of the data from the other communities, there's a, there's a significant amount of data. So we looked at this list with all of the communities, and then we looked at the list with pulling out some of the communities, um, based on, you know, they were less comparable. And either way, the list, the the overall analysis is the same, because you had so much data. So because because we had a good amount of data, it doesn't matter. And from the optics of an employee looking at the study, including some of these communities, is probably advantageous, because they might feel better that these are communities that, you know, I could look for a job for in Worcester County. So so I just wanted to spend a little time on that, because we did really think about this, um, in looking at the comparable communities. So we conducted a salary survey, and we sent it to all of those, the twenty communities on that list. A couple of things, uh, when we did the survey, there's a few different things to keep in mind. First of all, we identified the job, so, you know, you might have an employee that says, oh, I do this, and I have this title. But if I went to this other community, say in Northborough, the title's different, but it's the same job. So we always identify, we we have the title, we we give a little identification of the position, and then we ask the community if they use a different title. So it's really important that we try to compare apples to apples, so we really review the data to make sure that it is accurate. The other thing is, we want to look at salary range data when we're doing any type of comparable analysis, because, you know, if you have an actual salary only, you don't know the market conditions under which someone was hired, nor do you know, um, nor nor do you know the, um, the range at the time, so so the economic situation. So we want to make sure that if we have a range, we're looking at a better value of the position at the time. And then when we did the survey, we did it last year, that was the market at the time. And in the report, there's a way for you to make sure that in the future, you're looking at the market, you're looking at if they're adjusting their ranges to make sure they they remain current. So even though it was a snapshot in time, going forward, you can still maintain your system to make sure that those ranges are current. Um, so there's another, the second table is table two, which is the compensation rates, and we calculated them at the sixtieth percentile. Um, and if you look at table two and table three, you're gonna see ranges. Table two, uh, which is on page twenty-two of the printed report, twenty-four of the the PDF, and then table three is on page twenty-eight of the printed report, um, and thirty-one of the PDF. If you look at those two tables, table two brings in the classification plan, which is all of the grades and the different levels, the different positions, plus the compensation data. And you'll see that we have the the positions, the grades, the 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 job factor analysis scores, all all of the job factor analysis information of establishing that eternal equity, and then we pulled in the data from compensation. And we pulled it in at the sixtieth percentile, and what that means, and what we're recommending, is forty percent of the communities surveyed, those twenty communities, pay higher for the positions, and sixty percent pay less. So being a payer at the sixtieth percentile means, from an optics perspective, that you're above average. You know, you you were looking at the employees in Upton and saying, we want to pay a little bit higher than the average or the fiftieth percentile, which is the exact middle. And if you look at the data sheets, it's not a significant amount more, it's not like you're paying tens of thousands of dollars more. It might be a thousand or two thousand dollars on a pay range. But what it allows you to say is that we want to be an above-average payer, so that's why we're recommending the sixtieth percentile. The other thing is, we developed the classification and compensation plan in different, what we would call bands. And so you'll see that there's four bands, the town manager is one grade, it's all by itself, so it's really just its own band. But the positions that are administrative and technical are in the first band, the advanced, uh, technical and supervisors are in the second band, and your directors and senior managers are in the third band. And the reason why we do that is because if you hired me in a position, in an administrative and technical position, and I wanted to move up to the next band, say I wanted to be an advanced, you know, technical position, I would need more training and education in order to do so. And and again, moving up to a higher band, the same thing. So we look at the positions in a particular band, we look at the compensation that we're getting from the market, and we develop the ranges. So so that's why we structure it the way that we do, and then we look at all of the information in the different bands. And there's two tools that we use in order to match what we're seeing from the market as far as compensation to what we're recommending for your pay ranges. The first one is what we call gradation, and the second one is range spread. So the gradation is the difference in starting pay. So if you look at that table two or table three, really, which really isolates the pay ranges, um, the gradation for grades one through seven is five percent, meaning the starting pay for grade two is five percent higher than grade one, grade three is five percent higher than grade two, all the way up to grade seven. It jumps up to fifteen percent from grades eight through twelve, because we needed to have a a wider spread for the the positions in the higher grades. And then the range spread is the difference in starting pay to maximum pay. So at grades one through seven, the the difference is thirty-five percent. So the the hi- the highest, um, the highest pay in the the range is thirty-five percent higher. So for grade one, the, you know, the minimum pay is one one number, and the maximum pay is thirty-five percent higher. It jumps up to thirty-seven and a half percent for grades eight through twelve, and then forty percent for the grade thirteen, which is town manager position. And from a theoretical standpoint, the reason why you want to make it broader is because if I'm, you know, saying grades eight through twelve, if I'm gonna be hired into one of those positions, a lot of times, those are exempt positions, they're salaried, you know, I might want to. You know, I might want to negotiate with the town to say, I don't want to necessarily come in at the minimum pay. I might have some experience. So the town may want to have some flexibility to bring the person in a little bit higher than the minimum, so they have more room to grow. So that's why you would make the, the bands or, I mean, the pay range is a little bit higher depending on the grade within the, the compensation plan. And then just going forward, the town has the tools to maintain the system. On the classification side, the town has the whole system with regard to, you know, the questionnaire we use to have the employees give us information. They can classify jobs and maintain your classification plan. You know, we're available for at least a year or more if for some reason, you know, you find you have to add a job or two. And, you know, you go through and say, hey, Joellen, you know, I think it should be in grade seven. What do you think? You know, we will, we will support you there, you know, we don't charge you. We want to make sure that you can use the system because it's your system and it will last you for a long time if it's maintained. And then on the compensation side, if you survey the communities we identified as comparables every year, if you talk with them, send them an email, find out if they're adjusting their ranges and consider that whether it's the finance committee, you know, you're developing the budget and say, hey, you know, we'll, we'll do two percent, three percent on our ranges. If you do that, adjust the ranges, I understand collective bargaining and all of that. You know, I know it's, it's a little bit more complicated than just doing, we're going to adjust ranges. But if you look at all of that, adjust your ranges in relation to what the other communities are doing, your compensation will remain competitive. So you won't find yourself behind or, you know, advanced, you know, as long as you're consulting the other communities that we determined to be comparable to Upton. So, so there's two ways on the classification and compensation side to maintain the systems. So that's my overview of what we've done. And again, I, I have to say, you know, working with your team has been really terrific. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
What was the feedback from the department heads? Did they approve of this plan? You said you met this department heads, am I correct?
I gave a presentation.
Okay, did you get feedback from them?
So, I mean, there is feedback as far as what's on the implementations. Um, and that's, that's where all this really comes down. Okay, personnel board had received the initial presentation where, where they were presented with fiftieth percent personnel board wanted to try to shoot for a little bit better than average. That's where the sixty, sixty percentile came out. And Joel provided information that showed there really wasn't that much of a difference. Anyone pay range may have just shifted by like five hundred dollars, really not that much, by that change. So when presented to the department heads, you know, one of the main, there's of course questions that get to be about, well, you know, someone's position, maybe they, maybe he would be in this step or grade. Because maybe there are certain aspects that weren't considered. One of the challenges ends up being that this is really about the position, that if a candidate, say, got promoted, an internal employee got promoted to a different position or left the town, what the position itself, not say a unique skill set that person brought, what was required for that position? And that, that can be sort of a challenge to sort of identify that differentiation. I think Joellen did a good job explaining sort of that this is about the classification of the position and that other elements really should be encapsulated and reviewed as part of a job description. To make sure that, hey, if there is these additional capabilities, it's not necessary to perform function, but maybe that's a reason for changing the job description to, to reflect more and it's more authority than what the job description is, right? That's why this is an organic process. It's not someone's locked into this and that's forever that because there may be changes we need to make just as we continually evaluate the organization. And as we know, just in the last two years, we've made organizational changes that have had to go before the personnel board. Make changes to job descriptions because we're responding to the need of the residents, but also in how maybe some of these functions change. So the, within the report, you have the, basically a pay scale that basically identified those ranges. The next step, and we're internally reviewing this, is what that looks like on the, the compensation plan. Where the, you know, the current plan has twelve steps. Here, you know, there's recommendation of fourteen steps. What does that look, how do we implement? We know that there are some positions, and there's not a lot, that weren't even on the grid. So we had to bring them on. How do we then maintain some level of internal equity if there are multiple people that come in at the low end of the, the grid in the department, but they have different levels of experience? You know, are you putting them all at step one? There's some nuance that we need to go through and review and talk to departments as part of an implementation plan before we can really propose a rollout for special account meeting to then fund. So there's internal equity that we have to look at as you then take what those job, job descriptions were for that classification plan and then put it on the compensation then, because then you have to consider, okay, we have a veteran of, of ten years in this department. And now that internal equity, maybe we need to adjust because they're, they're slotted very close to people who have only been here. So that's coming into the next step.
Good question. Do you have any other questions, Paul?
So, so I think there's going to be other opportunities for questions for the next meeting.
Okay.
We're, we're now internalizing and we have the sort of focus on what this then looks like and for future meeting with the board would be done over what that information looks like.
Has the personnel board voted out?
Yes, they voted correct. As it is. With the sixty percent.
With the sixty percent and the open range merit. With the sixty percent and that open range merit.
Yes. Yeah.
Well, thank you very much. It was a great presentation. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much. Okay. Have a good evening.
Thank you too. Bye-bye. Moving on to the town manager after view, committee recommendations. See if you can stay where you are unless you want to scoot over.
First, speaking on behalf of the committee, we want to thank you for giving us and entrusting us with the responsibility of reviewing this act. I will say that the people I served with on this committee were outstanding. It's very, very good committee. You will find that there are no minority reports because the consensus is based upon our debate. Sometimes it got heated, sometimes it got aggressive, but in the end result, we all changed our consensus and agreed. So it's unanimous, fine project. You will find, you have a letter from us as well as the draft, I think it did a couple of points. You will find that there's a rewording and a restructure of the act itself. When it was first written, probably twenty years ago, it's not at all what was originally written. It went before town council and then it went before the Commonwealth Secretary of State, I believe, and they legalized it. They changed wording and they moved things around, so it wasn't the original document. So with, and I have to recognize Mr. Racken, with his diligence and his commitment, we have restructured the entire process. So we got rid of redundancy, the flow is smoother, language gets corrected. Obviously, council will look at it again, but the intent was to make it more readable and more acceptable to the general public in, in reviewing. The other thing is when we dealt with positions and looking at positions that affected by the town manager, in no way did we affect personnel. All positions were looked at as position, to the point we almost noted. We were consistent with that. We did not want to influence any of our decisions based upon what position now and knowing that the fallacy of doing that is that at some point, transition turnover happens. And the person in that position today may change tomorrow. So we were very, very strong on that agenda. Also, we offered all elected boards and commissioned opportunity to commit. The first time we had a response, we had three departments commit. We then, after that, had discussion, we had questions, we regenerated more invitations. And we eventually had three invitations that went out through email. And it wasn't just to the elected boards or other departments that were impacted as well. We wanted to get as much input as possible. Our decisions are based on the five-year plan. We know that this is going to be effective to two thousand twenty-nine and we recognized that we were looking at a document that was written in two thousand nineteen. So it's really a ten-year window that we looked at that we're addressing. So another thing we did, and to get a sense of the process, we surveyed other towns. We didn't go crazy, but we did look at other towns and we found that uniquely, all towns are kind of consistent, the way the town industry responsibility fits in. There wasn't a lot of differential between the towns. There were slight differentials, like there called the town Shrewsbury had a trustee that was affected by the library and therefore that was the only person that was outside the town manager's story. But all the others are relatively consistent of our surrounding towns and the ones we looked at. We realized that not all the inputs we received, people are going to be happy with. But we felt it was our job to do what we felt was in the best interest of the town citizens within. And so that's where we have ended up. There are, if like we covered, there are two major changes that we recommended. And I know one was twenty-five thousand dollar cap on the town manager being able to enter contractual. And I know there was a lot of input that came and said it should stay that way. But when you look at the inflation in the last five years, it's been twenty-two point eight percent. And it's projected to go up another twenty-two somewhat percent for the next five years. So we're looking at twenty-five thousand, it's written in two thousand nineteen, what's that going to be in twenty twenty-nine? We're assuming it's going to probably have, believe it or not, twenty-five, forty percent inflation every day. It takes that twenty-five thousand, really makes it more, less a strength to it. And the other factor is if the town manager has the ability to enter into contract at a level, it eliminates the bureaucracy or the timelines where it had to be held in two D B and you were able to approve it and have an effect on it. Again, I hate to put it this way, but twenty-five thousand is not a lot of money today or it was even five years ago. The other one is the town manager's story over elected officials. There are presently three departments independent under elected officials that do not report to the town manager, their employees, that being the library, the recreation commission and the board of health. Again, we looked at this and we had considered input and it went a number of ways. We had two boards that felt that it should stay the same. And we had another one, I'll use, I'll name it, the RECTOM, where the recreation director and, and the chair of the recreation commission both endorsed it and said they have been in essence doing that and it's very effective. We have reasons for it, but we want to be clear that the elected officials still have total authority over the personnel in their department. They set policy, they have termination, hiring rights, salary, working with the personnel board. The only thing they don't do is the day-to-day operations. And we look at it and say, okay, most of these elected officials are not available for most part during the day. They have other careers and other occupation. So we're not looking at this, how many goes and monitors work. We're looking at it as an asset to the employees where the employee has a problem. I E. there was a problem years ago with one department and the chair of that elected department had to leave their daytime job to go address it. We don't think that's fair though, a person is making a commitment to this town. We all know what being elected is and the commitment you have to make to it. So I want to strengthen the fact that it should be looked at as an asset. So if something arises, no one has more resources in the town, town manager. Any issue, if, I'll use as an example, if there's a belligerent citizen that comes into an office and is giving somebody a hard time, the town manager has the ability to go in, make the decision and then act to change. And I'll get to this further down the line, is to the employees. But we want to put the employees in a situation where they have support. It's more the asset than the support. Some people look at it as, well, we're fine now, but you are, but you haven't hit the daily. As this town grows and it develops, you may need it. So that is our primary recommendations. We also have another recommendation, which is on page two of our letter. And these are somewhat outside of the authority we had, but we can process and we thought we should make it visible. Bring it forward. First of all, the select board should, we recommend, we bring this to the personnel board to look at the procedures manual and make sure that what we've said doesn't contradict what's in that menu. Because we kept referencing it back and forth and it's a lot of that transition. The other one is that we feel that each department should have a written procedure for their employees. And the reason is that in performing specific functions that department, if an employee should leave, you need that procedural manual of procedures to follow. And again, we're not the small town. I mean, our population is growing drastically. I would say it's, it's growing and significantly. And therefore, there's going to be more demands on departments. And so it's important they have procedures to follow. So should an employee retire or leave, persons coming in are more able to just move into that position. The last one, and this is a little out of the perimeter, but we found that there were many issues brought forward by departments where employees in the town are subject to certain issues, which I say, and I'm being candid here, should have more training to deal with. Questions were asked of employees and sometimes the answers weren't correct. Other times employees put situations where they don't have the, do I do this and do I don't answer. So we're recommending, as, and I know it's not within the perimeter of the act, that town council or some legal team come in and help the employees deal with the questions they may have and train them. How do we deal with a belligerent citizen? How do you deal with this? A question was asked, and I won't get too specific, but a question was asked to an employee and the employee's answer was definitely wrong. And if they had had more training, they would have known what to do in that situation. The other thing is medical. You know, we had, and it was personal within our group, there was a member that had a situation where a senior citizen that was lying down and needed assistance. And the answer is, what do I, I know what I do. If I don't have medical training, I call nine-one. Because if I move the citizen, I actually create more harm and I'm better than not trying to handle it myself. I personally did for many years, I could do it. But a person that's not trained, should we get involved, the person's help unless they're a hundred percent sure of what they're doing. So we're recommending medical and legal training for all personnel to help them get through their jobs and, and make it easier. So that's primarily the overview of what we proposed. And I want to be clear that, because I know it's controversial, the management and personnel under direct jurisdiction of elective boards, all employees hired under the jurisdiction of elective boards shall directly or redirectly report to the town manager. Meaning that the town manager is not going to micromanage that position. We just want that resource there to provide. All the towns we surveyed, all full-time and part-time employees to prove the town, we're the exception. So that's primarily the reason that we asked you. So any questions you have, I'd be glad to answer. Obviously, there's two other members here.
First off, I want to thank you, especially someone who's a grammar and English great, Mr. Racken, you seem to be a beautiful. You saw what I need to first origin. And I appreciate your work. My only comment, I, I know you work very hard. As far as the department procedures, what I'd like to see is now that we have a full-time HR position, have HR set kind of a framework. This is, and then have it be tweaked by each department specifically. So that what I'm looking for is consistency across the board. And I think, you know, now that we have a full-time HR director, we're going to be able to get along. That is what has been lacking in town is consistency across the board. Whether you work with DPW, you're in town hall, you're in the community center. Everybody should have the same training. Everybody should have the same booklets. It should be consistent. Because the more consistency, the less issues. And the same thing with training. I think all of that can be consented and offered by me and maybe important. I agree. What they, what stages are going to be and you should, and I agree with Laura. That should go through the HR department so they have the consistency throughout the team. Do you have questions or comments?
Great work. Thank you very much for the service of time.
We've heard you too.
The wisdom and expertise, they certainly did.
And you've diversified personnel that diversified backgrounds.
Yeah. Right. And I, I love that you sort of scanned around to other communities and looked for best practices. Different communities in the state, like it just phenomenal. The town's very fortunate to have the horsepower behind this one that we did. It was really important and a great team.
Good. And I, I can imagine, because you did interview all of us and it did get a little frosty when we were there. Maggie, you have some comments you got to add?
Yeah. So Debbie's here as well, and we're sort of representing the library trustees, which I think the library department is probably the largest in terms of the number of employees that report to a separate elected board and do not turn the report through the town manager. And we had a chance to give some input to the committee. And the library trustees have discussed this at their monthly meeting several times. And where I think the trustees and the town manager actually are very close on their goals. And we all support the collaboration between the elected boards and the town manager. As a department head that reports to elected board, I rely on the town manager's office and the HR department extensively in order to be successful. What the trustees are concerned about is they feel like the, the management of the library director is one of the most important functions of the board trustees. And they are concerned about the wording of reporting to the town manager. What exactly that involves and how that might get interpreted in the future. Ever, I've been here since before we had a town manager, we had a town administrator. And I feel like every town manager we had has been very helpful and collaborative. And there's never really been a sense of conflict where the town, any town manager wanted the library department to set goals and priorities differently than the trustees. But right now, the library department reports to the library trustees. It does not report to the board of selection. And it doesn't make sense to the trustees that employees would report to the town manager, who is a designated of the board of selection, instead of reporting directly to the board of library trustees. Especially if, you know, a future town manager might be thinking of taking this job and read the town manager act and say, okay, well, library employees report to me. That means I can assign them tasks. That means I can set their goals. That means I can set their priorities. And the library trustees feel like that is terrible and not the goal.
Debbie, yes.
Could be umbrella, be carrying my work with library trustees. I'm a member, anyway. We did have a lot of back and forth with the committee. And we did make some recommendations, which, you know, obviously not taken. But I think that we, the trustees would like more definition to per se, which is what you mentioned. All town employees hired in the jurisdiction of the elected boards shall directly or indirectly report to the town manager. Which is it? Is it directly? Is it indirectly? Is it hiring is directly, discipline is indirectly? What is the definition? I think you'd like a little more clarification in this act. So what that means.
I, I can, you know, so I'll take the chair of selectmen board off and go to the board of health. Board of health had a lot of the same concerns. You know, border health reports directly to Mass Public Health. Board of health needs to act. Border health makes very, sometimes unpopular decisions. I can tell you, I was billified when we shut dump. It was for public health and safety. We were billified last summer when we shut the beach. Once again, it's health and safety. And once again, Diane was calling me on a Saturday morning to shut the beach. And her and I were posting signs. I think the problem with the town managers act is its legacy. So if you put something very specific into it, if you need a change, you can't do it local. So what I would suggest is the town managers act is a piece of legislation. We submit it as is, and then as a town, we can codify it, we can clarify. And because if not, if you want to change your policy, you have to legislate. And that becomes an issue because it may not work. So border health was also concerned directly indirectly, but I think policies can be set within the town, and Joe, me, correct me if I'm wrong, to put the specifics in. Because if we put a specific in right now and then it doesn't work for you, we have to legislate the whole act to change it. And so that's my, that's my concern. But the board of health, there are some of your concerns.
Done what? To start that puzzle.
So I think one of the, one of the mechanisms that I've seen, and, and we have this in my most recent community, was actually a memorandum of agreement between the select board and recreation commission. We had one with library trustees, we had one planning board, those were all elected boards, that took this, this vague language and then identified what that was. And so, you know, policy retaining with the elected boards, how they oversee and make sure that that policy is implemented through the staff and that the daily administrative make sure that time and attendance records are correct, any sort of HR issues. I had done all of the annual evaluations for those department heads receiving feedback from the chair of those elected boards to facilitate that, to make sure that it happened in a time fashion, rather than just waiting and, and hoping that the elected board. So I think there's a way that the elected boards and working with select board come up with what that looks like. Because otherwise, the only thing that I've seen that we have existing policies that sort of allows for elaboration is within the personnel procedures manual, where the town manager is able to identify, here's how this gets implemented and interpreted. That's the only thing we have existing, so then we're looking at some other process. And, you know, we have in the existing act, we have the assessors where board assessors continues to do set policy for the department, but then the administrative is turned over to work with the town manager. But we can add language like that or come up with a memorandum of agreement that basically identifies on both sides, sort of shape on it, on here's how we interpret or execute really this provision that might be within the act.
As I may say, you mentioned the evaluation of employees. We are not, but we didn't endorse that. We're looking at the limitation on the town managers involved. Certainly elected boards have been respected for being elected, but there are issues and, you know. I, there's so many analogies that we looked at. It's, there were too many instances, or there have been too many instances where situations have arisen. And unfortunately, you know, I'll put it on tape, town employees haven't had the right action in dealing with it. And if they had the resource of the town manager to come in and say, okay, we're going to do it this way, then there's some assurance it's going to get done correctly. It's not to sit there and say, well, did you file this report this week? Did you do this? No, that's not the intent. I don't know how to express it any other way, but we're looking at it to be, again, I use the word asset, to reinforce and assist the department. The recreation commission chairman and director couldn't have been more specific as to how many times the director now works with the town manager and she was ecstatic. And the chair was happy to have this. Look, I've done an obligation to a career. This is nice to know that she's got a resource available to her during the day, should I not be here for other members to. That is the reality. Again, we didn't deal with personality, we thought, positioned only. And I know, we knew going into it, that there'd be some, you know. But I always use the analogy, it was 20 years ago when the board of selectmen said, we're giving up all our to a town manager because it's the right thing to do. At that time, the town board of selectmen oversaw chief of police, fire chief, DPW director. And honestly, we get tired of filling in all these roles and monitoring these employees. That's why we need the town manager. Well, the bigger we get, the more we are going to need that involved over time. That's what we're getting. So I just hope everybody understands. And I guess colleagues there.
I'm running sound like they think. Very good. Just to be, and I say this, how we go bigger, the problem can figure out. And all it takes is one individual, not someone who is a, but it's a library. I don't know the beach, you have all these different places, situations that can arise that have to be taken care of. Maybe you serve a situation with the nation, town manager needs to be notified, be a complaint if something's on the ground. And it can happen, of that was all true. It certainly is, you can put into a video very quickly, you can put a video situation inside. And that probably will go in memory of you that would say, the following situations, town manager should be on the side immediately.
I, I agree. You know, we, we are a community, a society, the generation is different than our generation. They think different, they act different. You know, you hear eight, eight year olds say, well, just so, and they have no clue what that is. And so I do, I think we keep it vague with some memorandums of agreement or understanding that was unclarified. I believe Maria has her hand up. Maria, can I call on you?
Yeah. Hi, everyone. For anyone who doesn't know me, recreation director. I just want to say, first off, I'm speaking on my behalf of me, not the recreation department or the commission. But I do want to clarify a little bit on my position. And I think I'm pretty in line with the library in saying that the definition of what oversight means, I think would be something that's really important. And maybe that's where we're getting at with some extra documentation on the side. But the town manager act language can stay vague, but I do think that would be important. I have made very clear, I think Joe and I have a great relationship and I don't have any worries with the current two people in these positions. But as everyone's saying, we're trying to make policy based on position and not person. And I definitely do have some fears if there was ever a different person in Joe's position of how this could be interpreted and how that could change the way that my entire department and definitely my oversight could be on the whim of, of an individual position change, meaning the town manager. So I would feel that it would be important to have a little bit more definition and structure around what is being considered under what heading.
I think. Yeah, I just want to say, again, I really liked the language everyone is using in this room. I like talking about collaborating and working together and using each other as resources. But the wording that's in the draft report is all town employees in the library department, under the jurisdiction of elected boards, shall directly report to the town. And I feel like that language is a different meaning than what was on the report to me.
Directly or indirectly or?
Directly. So I'm assuming, I'm assuming indirectly means like the town manager doesn't want my front end library staff to, I'm assuming indirectly means the library director reports to the town manager and the rest of the library employees report to the library directly.
Is that, is that right?
Um, potentially that might, which was intended, exactly this type of discussion. And the end of rep is essentially the network saying, okay, it doesn't mean that this is direct. In some ways it would be, it would be a beautiful crisis if you call that town manager. Just sorry you're not at the end. But in the most part, the indirect part, you have energy from the department. We're not, we have no way of recommending distributed authority of elected officials, how they run that department, even define the word officials, so we could understand that. I think the conversation we're having here is where we were going, and I think it's heading in the right direction. I'm being honest, I think you're threatening, shouldn't, I think this is just a matter of providing you with reasons. That's what you should be looking for.
But that's, that's not what reported. Reported means you are under the control of us. So if the town.
That's not necessarily true. And as someone with a background, I have an extensive legislative background. And especially in the wording, and that's how I know. I've written bills, I pass bills, but many times a bump you can tell it does need to be intentionally vague, and that's what it means. And then we can clarify and vote. But it is a mistake to put very specific things in a piece of legislation because then it's very difficult to change.
The board of trustees have unanimously voted several times that they do not want library employees to report to the town manager.
Well, that's on record, I guess, but all we can do at this point and work on a number of understanding type.
Right. And Brett has a comment?
Yes. So I think probably have all of the input and information that we need as a board. My sense, I don't, I think it's clear what people's positions are and we understand that. I would say personally, you know, I'm very sensitized to how individuals feel about changes like this. But the biggest illustration for me, when you're policymaking, and not that we always need to sort of go with the majority or because everybody else does it, it makes sense for us. But if all the other towns that we looked at have this type of a structure and have this type of language, there's probably a reason for that. And there's a benefit to that that's being realized and in place. And I think that we can take advantage of that to the town manager committee's recommendation, take advantage of that, give us that flexibility. And then make sure that as we work with and negotiate with each of the folks that are impacted by this and each of the departments and elected boards and officials that are affected by this, to work out the details so that your concerns are addressed in the moment, right? There's no reason we can't do all of those things. These aren't mutually exclusive decisions that we're making here. We're creating a consistent, general act intentionally with an acknowledgement, everyone in this room, it's all recorded, there's a record of it, with all of us saying, we're sensitive to the concerns that people have in these departments about to change. And we're committed to negotiate and work with those boards to come up with clarity around the details that work for everybody and address the concerns around assigning tasks, goal setting, discipline, evaluating performance, what is reporting mean, what is directly, who's indirect, who's direct, all that. We'll work all of that out in a way that is comfortable for the elected boards and it'll, it'll be fine and that'll be great. We'll continue to operate and support the community and the resources that the town provides. I, I think that I've always made a very clear distinction, and I always say this to people that get paid and sort of do this work as a career, right? Whether it's the DPW director or the chief of police or the fire chief or the town manager or the library director, right? Like, or the RECTOM director, right? Like, these are your full time jobs. This is what you do all day, every day. Like, these are your full-time jobs. This is what you do all day, every day. This is your career. I'm a volunteer. Elected boards are volunteers. We sort of are here to sit on the side up and support the people that are doing the work every day to make the town run. But those, that, that group of people that do this all day, every day, full-time as their job, like, that's a cohort of expertise and specialization that should be tightly aligned and coordinated and work together as closely as we can under the guidance of the elected boards and officials. So this makes a lot of sense to me from my perspective, and I think that's partly why so many of the other towns have done it this way.
I give it to her. We understand. The wording in the town manager act, although they have to add a power of, they'll be preventing a vision each town or election, you know, by itself.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, my, my, my position is that the way it's written and the way you've proposed it is great for the act. And then separately, we all agree that, yeah, you've got to, we've got to work out the details. And that's what we're going to do through all, through policy.
But they say, if they wanted to stop that, I'm afraid to say that would be, um, so you can change. So you can be able to write that memorandum, so I don't town manager act, I don't believe you could write that.
I mean, for the one part, the Town Manager Act, you know, does codify town, the town above its governmental structure. But it doesn't cover every, govern every single aspect. That's why we have financial policies. That's why we have HR policies that then expand upon all these elements. And, you know, this, um, town manager shall collaborate with town employees hired by elected boards. That foresee, you know, you can write in a purpose statement of a memorandum of agreement. This is, this following document is how we interpret as the select board, ultimately the executive branch interpret this. And the, the strength of that is they get to review my performance to see if I'm living up to them. So the mechanism on making sure that this works is, is basically, we all agree on what this looks like. Because realistically, going into special town meeting, I don't think we want to be on different sides of an article. We want to work it through because ultimately, no matter what, the three people in the three positions, Matthew, Maria, and I, we still work together and we're going to do this. But this is almost like codifying how this behavior should work. And that's what the M O A would really have the strength of doing, defining that. So when we all retire in 25 years and, and new born people are coming in, that they know what the expectations are. That's really, the benefit is setting expectations on both parts. So we understand the roles, and it doesn't get misinterpreted by people coming in, coming in, going in these positions.
You know, this is really a recommendation, and now we need to get the details. The devil will be in the details. And ask for the memorandum of.
I worked under the town managing government government for 20 years, and as you have presented, I still had my authority as the treasurer of the board. I have that under the law, which the law protects a lot of us. Like you said, it's an asset. If I had something that went wrong, I'd go right up to him. But that didn't mean he could come down and order me to run. It just didn't, it worked very well. I cannot say anything bad about it.
When I see him, that's when I saw you here first, and then Mr. Fleming?
I just wanted to clarify the statement I made earlier about, you know, I'm stuck with the E V A and the ingredients. But it's so all over the place with this for years. I want to get right to this guy. And, and I'm, what the process will be in the video, I'm the town, we need one segment of this, I have the town manager putting it in to go enforcement where I leave the funds and leaving the grievance they gave you before they had you in. I, does that go back to the committee or?
I, quite honestly, I totally support what she's saying and just would ask that, you sit down and talk about it. I have enough to do. I don't want to be in there, and I totally agree from a structure. I'm just a structure. I also imperative. And that Town Manager has authority to reorganize, just like we did from codes E V A, all that into a land use. I just would like to sit down and, and sort of go over that. And I'm totally in support of exactly what you said.
And my attaining is this is the discussion, and this is a recommendation. And now the board takes the discussion and the recommendation and we tweak it. You know, so we can change that language. Yes. We can add clarification. Yes.
Now, the chairman, you said it correctly. We have done our obligation, met our obligation. We've turned it to the board of selectmen, who then, under the act and the Bible, has a duty to review this and make statements or recommend changes.
So we can change that work. Does anybody dispute?
And we, we can tweak, you know, because like I said, both water health and library have some concerns and, you know. But I, I do know, you don't want to let, you know, that's a lot.
So you can again, we've done something.
So we would, we would maybe do workshop before we, we put the final product together with, you know, and discuss this amongst ourselves and say, this is what we think needs, you know, this is great, but we need to tweak here and tweak here.
So they'll get their part, they're remembering, but we had a standing under their part, so all was there to get, so it all works.
So like I said, right now it's a recommendation, and we, we're going to end up with a final product.
And you.
You're welcome. Martha?
And make this transition and talk to the, to figure out what they learned. And maybe that would help the conversation and make sure that things are set up.
You're looking at me. We've turned it over to the board of selectmen. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That is hard.
But I, I should, my understanding of what's really was that we talked about various positions in various departments. They look at, yeah, I think, am I correct? You looked at all departments across the board? And you spoke to other towns who looked at all departments across the board. Am I correct?
You take towns, and she knows one, town of Shrewsbury. Town manager, all, all time and part-time police process. Now there are levels of authority, but and the elected officials still have some, you know.
I just thought, I heard people, if they talked to another town, made the transition, it might help to, well, some.
Thank you. Great feedback.
Yes. Anybody else have anything to say? Thomas?
I'd just like to add on a positive note, the other recommendations from the committee that weren't part of the act. I think those are great, the procedures and the training. And I'm delighted to participate in those.
Yes. I really think, I think what the town needs to move to is, you know, we're not the little town of Updene. And I, as anyone, as a fifth generation, am not never, you will never hear me say, well, we used to do it. We all been done it. It's 2024, we need to move forward. And the world is in very different parts. And that's, I think, consistency rules. Consistency with the training and the education and will all be safe. Because like I said, I'm a little worried about the next generation.
So basically, you're saying the police out of the stuff in 1972, they did very well.
Well, yeah.
You got that one.
Well, you know, so, yeah, exactly. Things were very, very different. You know, my, my dad gave many a person a ride home from the pit, so that would not apply these days. So, all right. I'd like to thank everyone for your input. Thank you for coming. And thank the committee for all of their work. We appreciate it. Good night.
Awesome work. Great job. Thank you.
Sometimes it's a thankless job. Yeah, sometimes it's a thankless job.
Usually it's a thankless job.
Well, nothing, nothing, nothing but thanks for the past 35 years, right? Nothing, nothing but gratitude.
Well, none of us are in it for the money.
Yeah, like I was making $6,000, and I wrote, you need to go to $500.
Yeah, exactly.
What was I thinking?
My, my standard joke.
Not one thing.
Yeah. My, my standard joke is, you know, I live a third of a mile away, and I do not think the $500 is going to cover my gas. So. So now, on to the next, consideration of proposed appointment for executive assistant into building commissioner and.
I previously emailed the board with information. We had gone through hiring process for the second assistant and have a great candidate that I would like to appoint to that position. Also, interviewed for a interim building commissioner, someone that has a lot of experience and actually loves dealing with zoning complaints. I know that's, that's must be a rarity, but this person has significant amount of experience and not only the town and military, but then also other towns and recently doing interim work in other area towns, including Westboro, Dudley, Grafton, Oxford, Millbury, and Scirbridge. And then lastly, met with the building commissioner in Westboro. And the town of Westboro be happy to assist us in a intermediate period. And also has more of a longer term sort of coverage when we fill the building commissioner position. So our building commissioner can go on vacation in an alternate capacity. So I'd like to present these three candidates for, for the board's consideration for a vote.
Discussion? Assistant, or some, I, I think yes. I think it's all a wonderful idea. Do I hear a motion?
Well, I can't find.
I could take this if you're good. I can take this one. I move with the select board vote, section four A I, the Town Manager Act, to waive the 15-day rider refusal and approve the town manager's appointments of Susan Brower as executive assistant, Ronald DeSantis as interim building commissioner, and Westboro building commissioner Fred Lenardo as alternate building commissioner.
I'll second.
Call of favor?
I.
You know this. Thank you.
Good job.
Do I hear a motion to?
I'm going to adjourn the meeting of July 9th, 2024 at 8:03 PM.
I second.
Call of favor?
I.